Hi, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Judson, second. Commissioner Barlow. Any discussion about the agenda? Okay. All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Thank you. So we have an agenda. We're going to start with public comment. And Commissioner Curry is going to manage this for us. I just want to say that I see how many people here tonight, and we're happy to have you here. And want to just note that the commissioners are always available for conversation. The public comment, we welcome hearing from you, but if you'd like to contact us between meetings, we're also welcome to do that because it gives us an opportunity to have an exchange with you. So we have a 20-minute public comment period, and it is a fixed two minutes per person. If you are unable to complete your comments, please feel free to leave us a copy or to email a copy, and we will make sure that all board members hear that. So...
First person is Haley Newman.
(inaudible). Oh, sorry. I just have some... (inaudible). Okay. So, Haley Newman, I'm a sophomore at Burlington High School, and I'm just going to assume, because I have two minutes, that some of you know about the swastika issue at BHS where there is a student at the school who's allowed, who's being allowed by administration to use a swastika as his profile picture on his BSD Gmail and Canvas. And as a Jewish person, I was very upset and felt very threatened by this symbol, considering that it was, like, the swastika was the face of an entire extermination attempt of my religion. When I went to administration to confront them about this issue, they were very dismissive, and I was told that I should not be offended by the swastika because it was a Hindu swastika. And because of this dismissiveness, I decided to take, I decided to write a petition and send it to the Diversity and Equity Board. And the petition that I wrote, the purpose of it was to engage in a dialogue with the school board and the Diversity and Equity Committee, and to understand what went into the decision-making of condoning this symbol and exploring the censorship policies and how they applied to this issue. And I sent that about three weeks ago, and I have not received a response from the Diversity and Equity Committee or the Board, and it was signed by 82 community members, both students and parents. And we wanted to initiate a conversation, and since that hasn't happened, some of us are here today because we want to make sure that it doesn't get dismissed or brushed aside because we do feel that it is important, I feel it's important, because I'm, I was saying that I felt unsafe and threatened by this symbol in school, and it was not acknowledged. So I want to know what went into the decision of condoning this symbol, and I would really like some transparency and for you to speak truthfully with us and to engage in conversation. A dialogue takes more than one voice. Why have you been silent about this towards us? Why have you been silent to the people who rely on you to keep their children and them safe and accepted in school? Thank you.
(applause). I can do mine and just give the full warning.
All right.
Get a bell.
Sorry, Karen Newman?
Hi, I'm Karen Newman. I am Haley's parent, and I just wanted to comment really briefly on the fact that, obviously, I was kind of distressed by the administration's reaction to my daughter's expression of concern. But I figured that this is a great opportunity for learning. It's certainly very relevant with what's going on with our country right now, and, you know, it's antisemitism happens, it's out there. So, but, you know, when, when she was dismissed and treated in a pretty disrespectful way, I was really pleased with the fact that we were offered the opportunity to participate in a meeting with the Burlington Restorative Justice Board. And that was great. You know, there was a person from the Board that mediated a meeting between me and Haley and the two principals involved, and I really was satisfied with being able to voice our concerns. I felt like they were able to hear us. And what happened from that meeting is that the facilitator came up with a list of recommendations. Unfortunately, none of those recommendations have been addressed since that meeting in April, and that, again, is just extremely disappointing. So, you know, I'm feeling like this is a great partnership between the city and the high school, and that the Restorative Justice Board is an excellent resource, but if the school is not willing to use the Restorative Justice Board in the way it was intended, then it's not a resource at all. Thank you very much.
Here we are again. It's been almost a year since the last time we were awaiting a FactFinder's report. As you know, the findings are not binding. However, after hearing the proposals from both us and you, the FactFinder will strive to offer recommendations that can either be accepted outright or be used as firm ground for reaching agreements. My hope is that this time we will seriously consider the report and work with it, not refuse to accept it and move toward the crisis of last fall. Just as the teachers accepted the FactFinder's report last fall, I assure you that we again are prepared and ready to work with the report's findings so a settlement can be reached. Let me note that contracts bargained in good faith between the school board and the teachers, school board and the paraeducators, sitting as equals at the table, are the last defense that guarantees that the working environment for students are safe, and teachers have the time required to design, execute, and assess student-centered educational programming. It is the contract with the paraeducators that ensures that students receive the support they need to succeed. The contract through compensation package and working condition components is indisputable proof that the Board wants to retain and attract the best faculty and paraeducators for the city schools, the city students, excuse me. While there are some, both locally and nationally, who will vilify teachers and belittle education, we are not the enemy. We are the ones who work daily with Burlington students to make sure each student is challenged and learns the skills and knowledge needed to become a participatory member of the community. We are proud of our profession. We take pride in the work we do, knowing that we do not produce widgets, but rather nurture young adults who have individual needs and dreams that can be realized. We also are your neighbors, friends, family, customers, taxpayers, and voters. As teachers and paraeducators, we take our role seriously as models for that desired community involvement. On behalf of Burlington, some forty, four hundred teachers and paraeducators represented here tonight, I extend congratulations to the graduating class of 2017. Some 250 Burlington students will accept their high school diplomas on Friday.
Sorry, I have two sentences.
On Friday, in a commencement ceremony that acknowledges and celebrates the efforts of our students to prepare for the next step in their lives, be it career, military, or college. Also, behalf, on behalf of the Burlington teachers and paraeducators, we look forward to welcoming the class of 2030, when they begin kindergarten at the start of their formal educational odyssey in the fall.
Caden?
Hi, my name is Catherine Cadden. I'm with an organization called Babatri International, and we're here in Jeffersonville, Vermont. And we put restorative programs into schools. And being a classroom educator for 25-plus years, and having been a principal and started a private school, I'm very aware of relationships between students, teachers, and parents and staff, and the importance of that when we put a restorative system into place in a school. And so I was invited by Black Lives Matter to present. We'll be presenting June 21st at 7:00 PM at Shop for Change in Winuski. And specifically, I've been designing with my team, looking at a restorative justice system that we can put particularly in Burlington High School, but in other schools, to deal specifically with the suspension issues that have been, been taxing this district. And I want to give some of my time to some of my colleagues here.
Hi, my name is Megan Carlyle, and I am a member of Black Lives Matter Vermont. And a couple months ago, our team came to the school board meetings, and after noticing a huge disparity in the, the giving out of suspensions and expulsions to students of color in the Burlington School District. So as a team and an organization, we decided to press into this research and really dive in and see what we could do to make a difference. So the past couple months have been spent as a team, and this isn't even the extent of the team, researching best practices, putting together data, and communicating with Catherine, and figuring out solutions. So we'd like to invite you to our presentation that is next week.
I'll name, I'll name, I'll name too that part of what our organization does and how we interface with the schools here is, our organization also works with the Vermont Refugee Resettlement Program, and we run Crossroads, Where Cultures Meet, which is a mentoring program for new Americans. And the feedback we've been getting from students hasn't been what we'd like to be hearing about how students are treated when there's conflict or when things arise. And so that's part of our investment of wanting to bring the alternative.
I'm Ebony Yoni, and I'm the co-founder and key organizer for Black Lives Matter Vermont. I'm here in support of the team that has been put together because we are, we are attempting to eradicate racism from the Vermont Public School Districts. And it's going to be one district at a time, but we know with the support of school administration and staff that it is possible. Thank you.
Do you want to say the date and address?
In addition to that, we'll send the superintendent more details about the event. So it's next Wednesday, the 21st, at 7:00 PM at Shop for Change, and it's on, it's in Winuski, 325?
325 Main Street.
325 Main Street, Winuski. We hope that you come.
Superintendent Obang said he was going to be there already, and we'd like public to be there as well, in addition to the school board members. It's really important to have community support and really bring these issues to the surface, and having the community there is a great way to do that.
And that includes the racist school board members, too. Thanks. (applause). Was Medina with the group? Medina? Medina Hesse? Was that you? Okay. I didn't know if you all signed up or just one of you. Rich Nadworny?
Hello, my name's Rich Nadworny. I'm a parent of two students in the Burlington School Systems. I want to applaud Haley Newman for persisting in this issue of the swastika. It's amazing we're still talking about this. Six months ago, I was in contact with Principal Rassico when my daughter and another student complained about this, and she assured me that she was bringing it to the attention of the Equity and Diversity Department and that there would be a quick resolution. I guess that meant doing nothing, because nothing's really happened about that. Whatever you say about the swastika symbol, it is a symbol of German and neo-Nazis, and it stands for one thing: hate. This is not a Hindu issue. The administration's response has shown an alarming lack of competence. This should have been an easy solution. I'm not sure if they're scared of some big right-wing lawyer in Washington. I don't know. But it feels like this is not about people acting emotionally when they feel threatened by what they see. Imagine for a second that this persists and this is okay, because the school is basically saying that it would be okay to see symbols like this. These are caperotes. These are good Spanish Catholics in 2009. Nothing to do with the KKK, right? And imagine a student putting that up as their symbol on Burlington School email. Imagine the rightful outrage of African-American students that seeing the hateful symbol of KKK. Imagine that the administration did nothing. I would bet you in that scenario that Nikki Fuller would slap another racial lawsuit on the district that so fast it would make your head spin. So let's get to the bottom of this and make it fair and equitable for everyone so that they feel safe in school. And if the school district and the principal at BHS can't do this, let's appoint an outside task force to get to the bottom of this and make the changes we need. Because when it comes to online and offline property in the Burlington schools, there shouldn't be any rebels, or white hoods, or Confederate flags, or swastikas. It's pretty simple. Thank you very much.
There's no one else signed up, but if anyone else would like to speak?
Okay, that closes public comment. The next item on the agenda is board reflections. We have just a couple of minutes. Jeff?
With respect to the matters related to the, what's been described as a swastika, I think it is incumbent upon the district to issue some kind of public response, to respond in some manner, to let the public know whether something is going on, whether something is being done, whether there's any progress that we can report on. I think it's very important, and that's all I want to say about that.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is, is the board report. And because there are so many here, I know that are interested in the contract, we are going to be providing some information about the last mediation in just a few minutes, if you'd like to stay for that. So the next item on the agenda is recognition of student representative to the board, Jake Bucci, who is here. And Commissioner Curry has something for him and some words for him.
All right, Jake, thanks for coming back to sit through one more public hearing, and you're welcome to stay for the whole board meeting. We wanted to just give you this plaque to thank you. You've been a stellar student representative. Jake is known by his peers as an excellent photographer of school games and events and other, I'm sure, things around the community with strong journalistic skills. And I hear he has a great sense of humor, although under this forum, probably didn't have a chance to show us that very often.[1098.58][1098.58](laughter). On the board, you've exhibited strong leadership skills, curiosity, persistence, and patience with governing processes that probably must appear, appear archaic at times. You jumped right into the board's business by organizing a student forum when the district faced both an administrative transition at the high school and considerably significant cuts to school programming, to make sure that your, your peers had a chance to ask questions and get answers and voice their opinions. And that was really a landmark event. No, a student hasn't done that in a long time, so thank you for putting your, your time and your effort into that. Jake joined the policy committee with a focus on developing student government to give students a formal way of influencing administrative and board decisions and working collaboratively with the new administration. He, he worked to assure that student government would include, be inclusive, and represent the diversity of the district, and I don't know if that goal has been achieved, but that was certainly a commitment that Jake made early on to working with the administration to do that. He gave excellent information and updates to the school board about all kinds of events at the district, and worked to extend that communication down to the middle school level and reach out to them and make them aware of student government opportunities. Jake had excellent attendance and was mature and an active student representative. I understand you're going to Holy Cross College, and we wish you all the best, and thank you for enriching our experience as board members. Thank you.
Any other board members? Jake, do you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I'd love to. So I'd like to first thank the board for giving me an excellent two and a half years. It's been such a great experience. I'd also like to thank community members, parents, students, teachers. If there's one thing that this position's taught me is that numbers matter. We see hundreds of students, teachers turn up to these meetings, and it really makes a difference. Hearing the voices of others in the community is, has had an, I can't even explain the impact it has had on me as a person and as a student. So thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
That's not the last we hear from Jake. He's going to give a student report in a few minutes, but I'll take up the next item on the agenda, which is an update, is an update on teacher contract negotiations. So we mediated on May 31st for seven hours, and an entire negotiating committee was there, as well as some additional board members were able to join us. And I just want to remind us all of what the board's goals were in terms of this round of contract negotiations, which was to improve operational effectiveness and efficiency, that is, to use our resources as carefully as we can. Fiscal sustainability, that is, a contract that is both fair to teachers and also reflective of the community's ability to pay. Expediency, so that contract talks are concluded by summer, and increased transparency for the public. We issued a press release, and I'll just repeat a couple of things from that. We went into the mediation. There was some movement on both sides. We were not yet able to close all of the gaps between our positions, but in terms of salary, the board offered 1.75% salary increase inclusive of new money for the coming year and 2% in a second year. The board's, I'm sorry, the BEA's final proposal was 5.3%. There are some differences also in terms of health care and some of the operational differences. What I'd like to do now is to ask Director of Finance Nathan Lavery to provide some clarity around the issues of spending on teacher wages and health insurance.
Yeah, so I wanted to provide a little bit of an update because of some of the information that had been passed along to me. Specifically during mediation, it was a chart comparing our spending on teachers to the total budget, and I was just concerned that this approach to understanding comparing the district's finances can be kind of misleading because it assumes that any time the district gets more revenue for any purpose, a portion of those funds should accrue to teacher salaries. So it's often inconsistent with the purposes of those new revenues. That is, say, we can't always use the revenues for that purpose, and sometimes it would actually be illegal to do so. So, for example, when BSD receives federal funds to provide supplemental services to English learners, we can't legally use this money to provide across-the-board teacher wage increases. Similarly, if there's a donation by the PTO, for example, for new playground equipment or something like that, we can't use that money to provide across-the-board teacher wages. But obviously, those are all examples of things that serve to increase the, the total budget. So in effort to come up with a metric that more accurately tracks spending on teacher salaries, I created a chart, which Brittany has put up on the screen here, that just shows wages by year and then the amount per FTE. And so as you can see from the chart, the salary proposal that the board left mediation having put on the table is included in here, as well as the base wages, and as well as additional payments that are made to teachers for non-contracted time, for summer school, things of that nature. I think the key, oh, we got a little, sorry. So the key, I, is in the number, in the 2018 budget, you see, that's the budget plus proposed wages. And teacher FTEs are the other thing that needs to be updated, obviously, because as those numbers change, that has, has an impact on the spending per FTE. So what the data shows is that over the past two years, we've had a 5% increase in the amount spent per teacher FTE. What it doesn't include, I made a little note of it on the bottom, are some of the other significant spending that we do in the form of stipends and golden handshake that's paid out as, as wages under the teacher agreement. So I think the bottom line there is we're on track to spend more in FY18 than we ever have on teacher wages, and we also will be, will have seen a significant increase in the amount per FTE that we're spending over two years. One other thing I wanted to just touch on that came up in the mediation was the health insurance. Folks are probably aware that every school district in the state has an opportunity with the changes in the VHI plans to slow the rate of growth in health insurance. It's still, the new plans that are coming out are going to be in effect January 1st, and they are going to provide some of the best coverage that you can, that's available to Vermonters in the state. But the major thing that's changing is how we pay for that coverage. So the last district position at mediation could result in lower health premiums for virtually all teachers who, if they select the gold CDHP plan. But that plan has the potential for higher out-of-pocket costs, and so the district also proposed reinvesting some of those savings back into an HRA, Health Reimbursement Arrangement, to help offset some of the increased out-of-pocket costs. And there's no agreement reached, as Commissioner Seguino mentioned, and so chances are now, and we'll have to wait and see, but we're probably all sides to negotiations, both in Burlington and elsewhere in the state, that have not reached agreements are probably going to end up subject to a change in state law. That's legislative action that's due to happen later this month. So it's really hard to say where we're going to end up as a result of that. It's a major unknown, and it'll be something that we will have to deal with one way or another when we have clarity on kind of whether or not we can continue to negotiate that issue, and if so, what the parameters are around that negotiation.
Director Finance, Director Nathan Lavery, can I ask you a question about this, just to clarify? So the 2018 numbers reflect the 1.5% salary increase that was budgeted for?
The one, they reflect the 1.75% year-one increase that the board put on the table during mediation.
Okay, great. Thank you. If there's no further discussion, we'll move on to the student report. Thank you very much. Mr. Bucci?
Thank you. Busy time of year at BHS. BHS Ultimate just won a state championship the other week, so congratulations to them.[1657.13][1657.13](applause). Students are just finishing up YES program, which has been going on for the past two weeks. They'll be ending in a presentation of learning tomorrow, where they'll be able to show off what they've done over the past couple of weeks. And then seniors will graduate on Friday, so very exciting time.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the Burlington City Council Liaison Report by Commissioner Curry.
Okay. Recently, a group of us approached the city. It included Kathy Olwell, Mark Barlow. We approached the city to revive the conversation about the pilot funds that were revoked by the city under the direction of Agency of Education about two years ago. And there's, this has been kind of a two-year conversation. There was a commitment at the time by the city to discuss proposals for reprogramming those funds in ways that would support students' needs, and I think most people are aware that we tried to put together proposals with Spectrum and the Community Health Center to fund some services. That was brought to AOE by the city, and AOE wrote us a letter, wrote the city a letter saying basically that those would violate Act 68 and the Brigham Decision. After our budget process, we regrouped, asked to talk with the mayor, met with the mayor, and developed a revised proposal that would include a group of services that really go well beyond the district's mission and serve all families of Burlington in various ways, one of which would align with initiative he announced to use $500,000 for new childcare slots in the city to serve zero, kids zero to three. That's an early learning initiative. So we asked him to consider those, and when we did not really get his engagement, we approached the Board of Finance about, and brought the proposal to them. We started conversations with them and learned that essentially it was too late in the budget process to ask everybody to kind of turn themselves inside out and reprogram the funds, and which would have created a hole in the budget and a lot of time and effort for everybody, which was... which was, there wasn't enough time. So, instead, the Board of Finance, a couple of members agreed to request quarterly reports. The final conversation was with the mayor, was that he was willing to consider these proposals for the fiscal '19 budget, and the Board of Finance agreed to request quarterly reports to monitor his indication of his willingness to look at including these proposals in the fiscal '19 budget. So, we'll look forward to, over the next year, continuing a collaborative conversation with the city about how we can program these funds in the ways that we proposed. And if anyone's interested, we can circulate that proposal. It's been shared with the Board of Finance, and at this point, we're not intending to share it further, although it's certainly a public document. But, you know, we'll be working with the administration on the effort. Any questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Currie. The next item on the agenda is the State Legislative Liaison Report by Commissioner Barlow.
Hi. Since we last met, the legislators' session ended, and I'm happy to report that some of our advocacy work has resulted in at least a small change so far. As you remember, Representative Wright put forward a bill to change the weighting for English-language learners. And although that bill failed to get out of committee, the intent of that bill was included in, or at least a study to honor that, the intent of that bill was included in Act 49. So, one of the things that'll happen over the next bunch of months is that the Agency of Education, in consultation with Superintendent's Association, Vermont School Boards Association, and the Vermont NEA, they're going to consider, make recommendations for changes to that weight, that of English-language learners, and then all some of the other weightings that are included in the formula. So, I'm encouraged by that. And the other thing that I think we should resolve to do is make sure that our EL director, Miriam Ashadum-Kading, is part of that conversation, because she's clearly an authority, having, you know, lived that in the state's largest district with a large EL population. So, that's good news. The second thing I want to talk about is a motion, and so I'll give a brief statement about the motion, and then we'll make the motion, then we can have discussion on it. So, in discussions with legislators, it's been suggested by some that it would be helpful to the Burlington delegation, that we have an official position from the board, our board, on the state budget impasse, in order, so that they may better support our interests. And generally, without regard to any specific proposal, we would like to, we'd like better coordination of any cost containment efforts coming out of Montpelier with our school budget calendar cycles. Vermont School Board's putting budgets before voters on Town Meeting Day, start budget development in October, and typically finish in January. And we have seen at least three occasions in the last two legislative sessions where proposals or actual legislation is out of sync with our district budgeting cycle. This year, two legislative proposals, the web and Senate amendments to H509, had the potential to impact school district budgets that have already been approved by voters. And Senior Director Lavery spoke to that just a moment ago. So, the resolution that we're putting forward advises the Vermont General Assembly that any legislation passed in the upcoming June 2017 session should not constrain or impact our voter-approved FY18 budget, and it further advises that any cost containment measures for FY2019 should be understood before we begin our budget development in October of this year. And so, should I just make the motion?
Yes.
Okay. So, I move that we approve the resolution advising the Vermont General Assembly on state budget deliberations.
Okay.
And then I'll read the motion, or read the resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll wait until I read it.
I don't know, Brittany can put it up, thank you. Okay, so it reads, "Resolution advising the Vermont General Assembly on state budget deliberations. Whereas, the Burlington Board of School Commissioners recognizes that long-range strategic planning is one of our best tools for cost containment over time by allowing the careful alignment of educational programming with sustainable budget decisions. And whereas, the Burlington School District developed their fiscal 2018 budget through a comprehensive and rigorous process from October 2016 to January 2017, involving multiple occasions of community outreach and consultation with stakeholder groups, alignment of spending district decisions with district long-range strategic planning objectives, and with full knowledge of the new Vermont Education Health Initiative VHI health insurance plans, and the potential for changes to health insurance benefit structures in 2018. And whereas, the Burlington's Board of School Commissioners, after extensive deliberation, adopted the fiscal, the Burlington School District fiscal 2018 budget on January 10th, 2017, and the voters of Burlington approved the Burlington School District fiscal year 2018 budget on Town Meeting Day, March 7th, 2017. And whereas, the loss of anticipated fiscal year 2018 revenue or new spending restrictions placed on the voter-approved Burlington School District fiscal 2018 budget would undermine BSD planning, may result in cuts to programs and personnel, or may have adverse impacts to collective bargaining efforts underway. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Burlington Board of School Commissioners, on June 13th, 2017, advises the Vermont General Assembly to refrain from passing any legislation during their June 2017 session that would have the effect of reducing state education fund payments to the school district in fiscal year 2018 in an effort to contain costs by capturing theoretical savings the districts may realize as they implement the new VHI health insurance plans. And be it further resolved that the Burlington School Board of Commissioners, Board of, the Burlington Board of School Commissioners advises the Vermont General Assembly that any cost containment legislation affecting school districts in fiscal year 2019 should be clearly understood by October 2017, when many districts will begin their fiscal year 2019 budget development."
Now, I second.
Commissioner Barlow, you've spoken to the resolution. Would you like to add anything further, or shall we open this up for discussion?
We can open it up for discussion.
Commissioner Wick, and then Commissioner Currie?
Awesome.
Commissioner Currie?
I just want to thank you for pursuing this with the legislators and staying on it, and coming up with something that, you know, echoes both what I think you probably have heard from most board members, and also echoes what the legislature is looking for. And I think it is important that we weigh in formally as a board. So, thanks for making this timely.
I want to just add that this is a new position on the board, that is, a liaison with Montpelier, and I think it really behooves us to be able to weigh in as a large school district in Burlington. And so, I want to thank Commissioner Barlow for being willing to take that on and for doing the legwork on this resolution. And I think that it is important for us to share what it is like on the ground to have to develop budgets, and to be able to use strategic planning, which is really the best mechanism we have for containing costs in the future, and carefully planning our budgets. So, I want to thank you, and I certainly will vote in favor of this resolution. So, any further discussion? Okay, let's vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Commissioner Barlow. The next item on our agenda is the PTO report. Commissioner Judson?
This is a mere snippet of PTO's ways of supporting Burlington students, the most recent ones that I have known about. So, I want people to realize, this is really a mere snippet of what PTO parents have been doing for our students. Hunt sold t-shirts to support an end-of-the-year trip and will hold an event after this week's eighth grade graduation. Champlain PTO held an informational meeting for community members to ask board members questions. Three board members, four parents, and Principal Doreen Dorfman attended. Edmonds Elementary is selling tickets for the Lake Monsters baseball game on Wednesday, June 21st, 7 o'clock, to benefit the Four Winds Science Project. CP Smith and Sustainability are collecting children's books to send all students home with several books for summer reading. Burlington High School Boosters 2015 fundraising initiative continues to raise funds to create access for all students to participate in co-curricular activities. The online annual fundraising calendar encourages business participation sponsorships. For example, note the advertising signs on the BHS sports fields. IAA held a family portrait reception in celebration at City Hall and Fletcher Free Library. The main point that I want to make is that PTO members make a huge difference in providing things for the students that are not in our budget that we cannot do, and that are very important, such as the science project, books going home, et cetera.
Commissioner Judson? Any questions for Commissioner Judson?
I'd like to make a motion that we formally send a communication to each of the PTOs expressing our gratitude for the sorts of work you just summarized.
Do I have a second for the motion?
No, sure.
Commissioner Wick? I wasn't sure if you thought I said second, or whatever. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Harrington. Next item on our...
I'm volunteer to send the...
And even, that is even better. Thank you so much.
I'll help you.
The next item on the agenda is the Policy Governance Report from Commissioner Harrington.
We have an ad hoc policy committee that consists of me, Jeff, Liz, and Stephanie, and we met last night with Yao and Michael Healy, the consultant who has been assisting us with the implementation of policy governance. And Brittany, can you make that document appear?
Yeah.
Thank you. I circulated this document earlier by email. Maybe, can you load it up a little bit? We were last night met to consider further refining the N's policy, and also picked up work that had been started by the Diversity and Equity Committee at their last meet, or two meetings ago, articulating some of the existing diversity and equity priorities that had been represented in prior policies, and we took up the task of how to represent them in our new current policies. And we had an excellent session last night that resulted in a draft of new language for an N's policy. You'll remember that we kind of plugged in the BHS graduation expectations and our mission and vision statement as a kind of placeholder in the N's policy. I put a footnote in that document deleting the, for example, BHS graduation expectations from the N's policy, doesn't nuke them from practice, it just takes them out of that place in the, in the policy. It doesn't intend any change in the high school. But, so we have a new proposal for N's policies that also adds line, new policy 1.1, that addresses our ongoing efforts to close the achievement gap. On the second page of this document, we came up with some additions to the executive limitations policies that, the executive limitations policies, you'll remember, are the place where we put limitations around what, how the superintendent can act in directing the district in support of the N's. So, basically, the N's say, please do this using any reasonable and lawful means, and the executive policies say, but you can't do, do anything that's reasonable and lawful, but not that. So, the executive limitations becomes the place to be more specific about means. And so, we added language that would ensure that the superintendent proceeds with the implementation of restorative practices, and proceeds with addressing, reduce or eliminating disparities in suspension rates. We also added language to continue the superintendent, direct the superintendent to continue attending to using the district's inclusive recruitment and hiring process. We also proposed slightly broadening the policy that used to be titled Financial Planning and Budgeting. We are proposing titling it Planning and Budgeting, and included some language in there that instructs the superintendent to have a multi-year strategic plan that is used for, that is used in addition to the annual budget planning to move forward. So, we're just kind of putting those out there tonight for your information at the moment. We'll be coming back with, you know, a motion to adopt them, either at our June 24th retreat or the July board meeting. But we do have a few minutes now, if people want to have initial reactions, questions, comments.
Great, so...
Oh, yeah, yes.
Just in terms of process, did you want board members to send you any queries between now and the, our retreat date?
Sure.
If there's any, give people some opportunity to kind of reflect on it a little bit?
Yes. I mean, I would totally love to know whether the reason you have no comments now is because you find them opaque and hard to understand, or because you think they are just so stunningly beautiful, what more could be said? So...
All right, so if you could get those comments to Commissioner Harrington, November 24th, that would be great, and then we can finalize this at that time.
Yep.
Great, thank you. The Diversity and Equity Report. Commissioner Berasbeati isn't here tonight, and so I'll just speak with regard to our most recent meeting. Last week, we did a number of things at this meeting, and one of the things that we did was to discuss public forums that would occur under the rubric of diversity and equity this year. As we kind of shift to policy governance, and we are strengthening our liaison with the community in an effort to channel those values to the work that the school district does. And so, we identified many more ideas than we had, we think we have time for, because there will be forums that the board itself will want to hold. And the two top topics were special education and a meeting with new Americans. And so, we will be working to plan those, they will put them on the calendar for the coming year, and members of the board will be point people for organizing those forums. The structure of each will differ depending upon the target audience, and so, that's our first step in sort of contributing to policy governance. The other thing that we did was to look at suspension data. As many of you know, that has been a primary focus, in part because it contributes to academic inequality and lost educational services. And so, we looked at some data, and Superintendent Yobang invited the principal from Hunt Middle School and the assistant principal, Len Phelan and Maddie Shite, to present some data. And I want to just share with you, for me, what was really, really informative about those data, having looked at them for a long time, but perhaps more importantly, the context around those data. Assistant Principal Shite has experienced some restorative practices. She was, I think, very humble about it, but suspensions have been fallen 40% this year at Hunt Middle School. And I think that some of that at least has to be due to a different approach to keeping kids in the classroom, to equipping teachers with some tools with which to respond to the issues. And I don't want to underestimate the challenges that our schools are facing in terms of mental health issues, which are profound. And this is something that we are seeing at the young adult level, as well as the adolescent level in the United States. It's not unique to Burlington, but it is a way that we, as a community and a school district, have to respond to this. And so, we looked at the data, and we had monthly data by group, and what we found was there was a spike in suspensions in November and in February. When we queried Assistant Principal Shite about this, she said it was largely due to upcoming vacations, that kids were concerned that they didn't have food at home, that home was an insecure place, and school, they were losing access to a very, one of the most, the safer places in their lives. And I want to say this because it speaks to the work that we have to do as a community and also the district. And one of the things that we've invested in, in the upcoming budget, is trauma training and investment in restorative practices, and a number of other supports around mental health, which I know that teachers have identified themselves as a very important issue. And I say this because it's, for me, it's been a long learning curve around what is involved in terms of suspensions and disparities. And a number of people have noted racial disparities in suspensions. The, one of the largest groups is socioeconomic. And what we found at Hunt was, in fact, one of the largest group was young students that are originally from the New North End, and who have suffered really economic deprivation. And, you know, I think this is just a challenge that we face as a society, that inequality has grown tremendously in the last 25 years, and economic lives of many people are very insecure, and we, as a school district, are called upon to deal with that. And so, I'm really apprec... And so I'm, I'm really appreciative to Superintendent Yobang, Yobang for bringing in some folks from his team who really have a deep knowledge of this, and hopefully we all can continue to educate ourselves and the complexities and advocate for the funding that we need to make sure that our kids are able to learn in school. I'm going to invite others that were at that meeting, Commissioner Wick and Commissioner Harrington, if they had any other, and Commissioner Kleeman, if you have any other, anything else to add.
You really summed it up well. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
No, I was, that was my really first time at a full D and E meeting, and I was really impressed listening to the administrative team talk about the whole work that the entire school community is doing together. I think it speaks really well of the work that our staff are, are doing. And it also helped me understand a little bit more the ways in which adopting restorative practices is a journey. We heard in Karen Newman's remarks that things can be, there needs to be a full follow-through, and we heard a little bit in the presentation about some of the challenges that remain in continuing to make full best use of that, and I think it's really important to understand the, the process and a piece of moving forward with our strategic planning and budget planning is understanding what, what is, we are able to accomplish now and what are the resources that need to be in place to continue that work to flourish.
Thanks.
I guess I'll just add that, oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to add that it was really impressive to, to see how involved as administrators Len and Maddie are. Sorry, I'm like, last names, I know them. And how individualized plans are for students and how they know how to deal with each one, and the teams of teachers that work with them. Well, everyone in the entire building essentially, and how that works for an individual student as opposed to this abstract, not, not an identifiable individual student, but on an individual basis, case by case, I guess is what I'm getting at. And I, it was just impressive. I was very proud.
A quick thank you. Thank you for that excellent summary and acknowledging the work of our administrators. Often they don't get that opportunity to be recognized, and I had hoped there was a larger audience because I thought there would be, and I gave them that opportunity and to recognize that 40%, that's a significant, that's significant, that's significant, you know, decrease from what's happened. So there's lots to learn from what they've applied. We still have more work to do, for sure, but thank you for, for being to those who could be there, and we'll look to continue to give you some context around some of the data, because sometimes we just look at the data, and we look at that, and there's nothing. So we'll try to continue to work on strategies to give you a little bit more flavor around what's happening. And I also want to say that Assistant Principal Scheit will be Principal Scheit, right, next year, so.
Just to add to that, you know, I mean, I think that what this says is that when a school district is changing the way it approaches something like this, that it is a, it's a multi-year process, and I for one certainly would have liked to have seen the end of this, you know, out of school suspensions a while ago, but I've really learned what it takes to, for an organization and for staff to really move together in a cohesive way. And I want to, if I could, just add for a, a forthcoming Principal Scheit, that she, she was very humble, and she said that the 40% drop may not persist every year, and I think that she, she knows a lot about data, that they fluctuate, but I think that there was something really important in that and that there's a lot for other schools to learn and so forth. So I really want to thank your team for focusing on this issue, and I, I really appreciate also the board's sustained attention to this issue, which I think has really been needed, that the board needs to provide, you know, ensure that we do the budgeting that affords the superintendent to be able to implement programs that will address these issues. So thank you very much. Commissioner Curry?
Thanks. Yeah, I'd just also like to comment on how profound this is, having been on the board since 2013 and been looking at whenever data was available since 2011, you know, getting to this point is like a dream come true. And it's, I think, exciting that Burlington can lead this path for the rest of the state. Our needs are much more acute, but this is exactly, I think, the kind of story that we'll be able to tell the legislature to let them know why the Brigham decision no longer functions for Burlington in terms of giving us the resources we need to have equitable outcomes, and the scales have really tipped against us in a way that, you know, I think people predicted, but now to be able to have the data to illustrate that will make a real difference. And also, I think we all know that other school districts in our region really need some help in seeing, you know, these kinds of practices and expertise be implemented in a way that, you know, is not only thoughtful but really based on a deep knowledge of what, of what the situation is and where we're trying to go. And so I, I look forward to kind of, you know, really offering what you're doing to other districts and legislators as far as, you know, as, as far as achieving something that people, I think a lot of people didn't believe could be done with the, the limited resources we have, which, you know, that the reorganization of resources has caused problems for others in our community and in our district, and this reorganization of those resources reflects the values and the priorities that this board has brought forward to the community.
Thank you, thanks. I want to go back and finish something that I should have finished under the discussion on the contract negotiations I left off with Nathan Lavery, and I wanted to close by saying that the board and, as I understand it, the BEA submitted their arguments to the neutral Fact Finder on June 7th, and that we anticipate a report from the Fact Finder on July 7th. At that time, there's a 10-day period in which the Fact Finder report is not circulated to the public, the board will be aware of it, and of course, the BEA. That gives us the opportunity to continue to mediate, and at that, at, at the end of 10 days, that will then become public. And I just want to say that I think that, that, you know, certainly the board has, is, is hopeful that there will be a successful conclusion of this, and I think we're optimistic, optimistic of this. I think that all parties have been bargaining in good faith and that we will continue to do so. So I look forward to us continuing to engage in productive conversations as we go forward through this process. Okay. The next item on the agenda is an overview of board functions and city guard, under that, we're going to talk about the city ordinance and policy governance as well as the Vermont statutes, and I see that Colin McNeil is here. Is that right?
Yeah.
You want to come to the table? Is, is, were we waiting for Joe as well to do that?
I think we are.
Okay, great.
Just talked to him for one second.
Yeah, sure.
I was just here to kind of, I just got, just told me a couple minutes ago, I'm not really versed in the policy governance thing.
Okay.
He's stuck in a mediation.
Okay.
So if we can maybe hold off, and I might be prepared to do that.
Sure, okay, sounds good. All right, we're going to defer that item until Joe can be here, and so we're going to move on to the superintendent's report, and we have some good news. Am I correct that we needed to wait until 8:00?
Yeah.
Okay, we will do that. We're never ahead of schedule.
We're never ahead of schedule.
I can't quite believe it.
I know.
This is awesome.
There's a chance he could be here earlier.
Okay, we can move on. The next item is deferred maintenance of capital.
Yes.
Update. And where's Marty?
Right here.
Yeah, here, here, come sit right here.
Welcome. To my corner here.
Okay. So I'm going to, Marty's going to give us a little bit of update in terms of the summer plan and going forward, but I think the, the framing of it starts with Nate talking about the finance piece. We've gone through some extensive conversations with community in the past year and went through a bonding approval, and so this is sort of the first stage in terms of giving information to the board and the community in terms of what we're going to be doing with, with those dollars and how it's going to impact on our, our schools.
Right, so Marty will, will speak to a few of the details, but I think the important thing for the board to know is that we communicated to the city that for fiscal year 18, we requested that the city go out and borrow $2.3 million on the school's behalf. And just as a quick refresher, folks know that we don't borrow directly, the borrowing is technically under the city's general obligation. They pass that money on to us, and of course, we pay the debt service on, on that borrowing. So we, we requested 2.3 million. Marty can speak a little bit to the details there. The board should know that that is within our budget to afford the debt service in, in FY18 on that borrowing, so it's a small step toward the total that we will borrow to meet all of the expenditure items that are in the long-range deferred maintenance plan, but based on our assessment of the work that we could do this year and the amount of kind of prep work that needs to go in before we can really begin major work in earnest, we felt like that was the number that we could appropriately go out to, to request and that would also provide some flexibility in the event that there is some unforeseen issue that we, that we need to address, because again, the point of that old exercise in identifying the additional, you know, almost $40 million of deferred maintenance needs was not only to plan out when we might make those expenditures, but also to understand that you can't always predict when things will fail, and so we need a certain amount of money kind of in reserve that we can use in the event of some unexpected issue. So Marty, do you want to speak a little bit more to the, the details here?
Sure. So what I want to point out is the only real major building project that we're actually doing this summer is the Champlain Phase 2 window replacement work. That's roughly $700,000. The, the rest that we're putting forward with our capital funds are, we're clearly in a, in a planning stage. So the priority projects that we're looking to do in the summer of 2018 are to address the, the Edmond C. Building Shared Combined Cafeteria Gym Space as well as an early Ed Preschool Center, and also address the building envelope and HVAC upgrades at Integrated Arts Academy. If we were to do all of those projects next summer, what we actually set aside in our capital plan was roughly $10 million, so we, also part of the plan, we also set aside roughly 10% for architecture and engineering fees. So that, that's where the 1.1 million comes from with some additional funds also set aside for the planning work that we're, we're doing with Burlington High School, the design and engineering work for a proposed new building at the high school. And then we are, have another small project at Burlington High School just to do a, a gym floor sanding and refinishing that you'll, you'll see those bids later in the evening here. And Nate also mentioned setting aside that, that additional $500,000 to address any, any emergency equipment needs that we may need. Clearly with our, with our big capital plan, we're looking to address most of our projects as, as, you know, one large building project, and we're not so much focused on replacing individual units, but based on the age of a lot of our equipment, we want to make sure that we have some money set aside in case we have any emergency need to, to replace any failed equipment.
Can I just add, one of the things that Marty...
All right, I realize I can make it a little bigger. Hang on.
Didn't speak to that's part of that big package around the, the 500 round equipment is the review around some of our accessibility needs. That's ongoing, right? So that's an ongoing task that we have in terms of reviewing where we, and looking forward in terms of the high school as well as our other schools as well, too.
Commissioner Curry?
So yes, on that, thank you for bringing that up. I was under the impression that it wouldn't just be reviewed, but it would be actual physical changes to make the high school more accessible. That was an agreement we made when we approved the capital bond.
Correct. So, you know, through the, through our design process that we're currently doing with Burlington High School, we definitely want to implement some modifications to the building that will not necessarily negatively impact what our, what our, what our ultimate plan is. So for example, we have two elevators that are in need of replacement at Burlington High School. I've got to cost a, replace both of those elevators at $450,000 apiece. That would be to replace them as is. We have challenges with the size of those elevators, so there's need to make them larger and, as well as, you know, the access to the elevator. So through our high school planning process, if we kind of identify which, you know, if those elevators are going to remain in the, in the long-term planning of Burlington High School, and it makes sense to replace them now because it's going to be part of that overall project, then we'll look at doing that. But if we identify that, you know, we may just demo that particular area of the building, then it doesn't necessarily make sense to invest $450,000 at this time unless that piece of equipment actually fails.
Commissioner Curry, and then Commissioner Barlow?
So I would be interested in hearing examples of what is, what is feasible, and I know that there's expertise in the school and among the students, and I would suggest, you know, pulling together a, a group of folks to talk about what can be done, and I'd be interested in hearing back about that because this is an ongoing topic, and it has been since I've been on the board or before that, and so I think it's really important that we keep this in the forefront so that the information is available to all of the public who have participated in this conversation for years and years and years, and, you know, hope that we would, you know, solicit the needs of the students and the, and the teachers.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Barlow, and then Commissioner Kleeman, and then Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Barlow?
I just had, I just had a clarifying question, I guess. So the, there's a Champlain project going on this summer. Do we already did the bonding for that? Is that true?
Yeah.
Through our $2 million of bonding that we're already authorized to do, and this new, this is bonding in addition to that, that came from our new bonding authority?
No, this is, this is all in for this, this summer.
Okay.
Right, so if you're thinking of it in terms of how, you know, like if you wanted to put it into one of those buckets, you could say, yeah, that, you know, the first $2 million is, is authorized by charter in that sense, but this is, the $700,000 there is, is the project that you're referring to.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kleeman?
Oh, I just wanted to comment on what Liz had mentioned. I know things move slowly, and this is no comment on you or anything you have done or anyone, I just want to remind all of us that we have students that need these improvements now, and it's not good enough to get them done when they graduate, after they graduate. I know it's hard. I hate, but, thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Superintendent?
No, I, I think that, thanks Marty for bringing this information, and we'll, we'll continue to apprise you of, of progress, and we've had lots of feedback in terms of developing this process, and we have a number of key parents in some of the specialty areas who are also continuously sort of bringing awareness to some of the challenges. So we'll continue to connect with them as well as the students in terms of addressing some of the immediate issues, and we have the long-term things that some of the decisions have been made because of the status around the BHS project as well, too. But I'm happy to see that we're actually starting to address these deferred challenges. It'll be nice to have a list at the end of the year when I give a report under sort of our policy governance of things that we've done, and we can show that we've accomplished some of the things that we actually said we were going to do. So looking forward to that. So with that, I'm going to segue to the BHS project, and to give you a little bit of, wanted to give you a little bit of update in terms of the BHS plan. I won't steal too much of Kate's thunder, but we did have a, an open public meeting for interested community members who are interested in being part of a community to look at the future of the BHS site, and those are, it was a very productive meeting, so we have a larger group that has 20-plus people, and then we established a steering committee that's going to do some work, and so they'll do, well, I'm stealing a lot of your time there, right?
Yeah.
Here's Kate.
I'm here with what I hope will be happy news, along with Jim, who is, we're half of the steering committee so far for the Burlington High School Renovation Committee. As Dr. Yobang said, there was a meeting on May 24th with a large group of people. Out of that, a steering committee started to form. On May 30th, we came together, three of us, and we've now added a fourth person to the steering committee, and we meant to establish a timeline based on working towards a March 2018 vote for perhaps a bond. That's fairly aggressive, and our, that's our goal. It might not be what we make, but we're looking for a prize, but we really want to make sure that we do this in a good way with enough input and enough buy-in that renovating or creating a new high school can happen. And we're in the process of trying to suss out whether one of the plans of how to renovate is the way we want to go or a new high school. This decision will be made based on a lot of different criteria that's been developed at least from 2014 on, if not prior to 2014. of different criteria that's been developed at least from 2014 on, if not prior to 2014. The school district has been working on this for a very long time, even though it might not be in the forefront of a lot of people's minds. So on the, in, on the May 30th meeting, we decided on goals and roles for the steering committee as us four people kind of taking on different things. Our major objective is to make a recommendation to the superintendent regarding redesign or rebuild of a new building by August. Keeping in mind the list of criteria and balance of quality of end product versus financial liability versus disruption to education while engaging the resource committee, which is that larger committee, which we're hoping will help us do work groups and go out and really do a good job, like a feasibility study would be done for a capital campaign. And we'd also like to engage stakeholders in the public. On June 12th, we met, which was last night, after a very, not sleeping much. And we went with the architect and Marty and had the plans that are the most current general plans with general estimates shown to us. And we're in the process of digesting that right now. And we are, you know, so we reviewed those and then we talked after, you know, saying we're going to have to balance the priorities with decisions, with community input. So it's going to take a little while, but we're going to work towards that. Tentative structure for the resource committee will include following work groups but are not limited to because we might have to be organic and figure out how to do this as we go along. But they'll include community outreach, a financial aspect work group, and a work group that is dedicated to academic theory, pedagogy, education, you know, whatever we want to call that. It was also mentioned that if we do this right, we could help improve the climate and atmosphere and make this a really beautiful place to be. I mean Burlington's a great place to live. Having a high school that could be a gem could be really helpful to the whole city as well as just as our students, which would, you know, the possibilities are endless. We can make this really great. Next Monday night at seven o'clock, so June 19th, Marty will be taking people on a tour of the building. So if you hadn't had a chance to go through it from A to E to F to G to D to C-
When you're hiking.
Yeah. Don't wear heels. So that's for the resource committee, but we'd like to extend that to all of you on the board, too. Seven PM? Meet in the lobby, I would think? Marty? We're happy to answer questions if you have questions.
I just want to say thank you. That's a huge undertaking that a large group of, that you are taking. And I just want to thank you for taking it on. And I believe it's going to happen.
Well, as you know, from how many years I've been coming here, that it's pretty much a passion of mine. So it's going to happen.
Commissioner Barlow?
I just want to say thank you as well. And I truly believe that we need a really high level of community involvement in this process in order to make it successful. If it comes from, you know, the board and the administration, I think it's a much heavier lift than if we can get community buy-in.
Thank you. Commissioner Curry?
Are there students on their resource working group?
Not currently.
Will they be asked if they want to join?
Yes.
Yeah, that was actually in our first meeting, that was one of the asks for the group. And so I thought a good strategy would be to, first of all, appoint our new student reps to be on there. And they could also find a process to also get additional students to be on. So then you'd have some board kind of representation from the student perspective.
How about teachers and other staffs?
Yeah, we're looking towards, we're at the point in the process where we have a list of the people who are very interested in it. And we want to go through and make sure we're not missing key areas. So I, there, yes, we haven't gotten to that point, but we want to be all-inclusive.
Just one other thought is that a number of teachers participated in the earlier 2014.
Right. Yeah.
And so it would be, imagine you've thought of including-
I have their list. Yeah.
Great. Great.
Can I just give a quick thank you to the Jim and Kate and the other steering committee members? I mean, when we were having these conversations, it goes in so many different ways because you want to get into the design of the project without, and really the first stages of talk about the process, like who's, and that's a, that's big work to get the community engagement piece. So thank you for stepping forward and being able to do that.
Jim, did you want to say anything?
I think we definitely want to hear from you folks as we move along. The formal plan is that we come to a recommendation through YOW. You'll get that recommendation. But in the meantime, as Mark pointed out, it really is a very heavy lift and it's going to take a lot of public engagement. I'm aware of the attendance at NPAs and that sort of thing. That's the place that is where you, every citizen is a member of an NPA. And so I'm going to encourage you to get out there and get that, let them know what's going on as well as get feedback. And we'd love to hear, lastly, what is most helpful for you guys in making that decision because we'll want to justify our recommendation, but we need to know what information would be helpful in that final recommendation.
Thank you so much. Thanks. Thank you. I was going to say it's very much appreciated. We, as commissioners, know how much time this takes to do something like this. So thank you so much.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, so the, hopefully the, it's not here yet. So the next item we'll move to is the website update. So we, first of all, most of you met Eric. Eric is our communication specialist. And Eric is doing Yeoman's work in terms of looking at our communication strategy. And one of the pieces was around changing our website in terms of, I remember when I first was looking at the district in terms of coming here for employment, one of the first places you go is the website. And you look at it and you go, "yeez," or "Eric." And interestingly enough, and Brittany will tell you this, some of the interviews I've had in recent times for office staff, one of the tasks had, were around website and communication. So we had a lot of communication from people external in terms of what they thought about our website. And it wasn't good, like in terms of, so Eric's taken on the lead on looking at this process. So Eric and Brittany have been working and working with some of our community partners to establish. We wanted to give you an update of where we are in terms of the process because there will be some stoppage as we move into the next phases, right?
It's mostly going to be Eric talking, so I'm going to be typing. But Eric, maybe since you're sitting, unless you feel like standing?
I can drag.
Okay. We'll just pass it over.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, YOW. So let's have a few quick slides tonight to carry one a quick overview of where we are and be here to answer questions, too, if there are any. So jumping into this, some goals we're looking at. Really want to look to create an improved user experience using a revised site structure. So what does that mean? How it's all laid out, the menus, the links, the content, really taking a look at everything encompasses our website. And also looking at the look and presence that showcases a district visually. I know anyone looks at it right now will say it's really text-heavy, right? And in our district, we really want to showcase the students and people that make up our district. So we're looking to enhance our visuals with photos, video. We have many great opportunities and great resources to share that way. We also want to make an ease of use for content updates by staff. I'm one person in central office, but a lot of work is done at the school level by staff there that has a lot of things on their plate already. So it's a priority to make sure any updates and information out of that site is something that's intuitive and something that they can do, work into their schedule. And then also we're looking at kind of reimagining and making more efficient some information delivery systems. We've got some automation options for summaries of information to be sent to folks, so maybe once a week, maybe every other week. That's something we're exploring through this process as well. So what we've been doing is we're working with Stride Creative Group. They're a local firm in Burlington and we're, and we're, and we're web developer. We looked at some proposals and evaluated those proposals in April and we decided that Stride would be the best partner to work with for this project. They have a relationship with the districts of about a decade. Some of the key deliverables you're probably familiar with are the calendar handbook we put out every year, that paper version that goes out at the start of school. They've been our partner in producing that. They also worked on the Burlington School Food Project website wrapped up about a year ago. So we felt their vision, process, experience, staff and style really stood out to make them the best partner to work on this project with. And it was really important that we worked with a firm in our city to keep taxpayers' dollars local. Some other clients they've held are Green Mountain College, St. Michael's College Graduate School, Gifford Medical Center, and the Lund Family Center. And here's a quick snapshot of their work, the homepage of the Burlington School Food Project. So here's some of the steps that we've undertaken. Since I came on board in February, I spent some time getting acclimated and really looking at our current site, what makes it up, kind of what are our key categories, how all those systems kind of fit together and information on the website. I've had conversations with senior directors, principals, systems leaders, shared with the board, some survey questions around communications, focusing on information to get out there and how people would like to receive it, trying to look at that larger level as we look at our overall communications and try to see where those can fit into our website. And I've also reached out, I've gone to a couple PTO meetings and also communicated with all PTO leaders with some community survey information and reviewed those in this process as well. And the PTO meetings I went to were great, just to sit down with parents and teachers there and get a feel on the ground, what are the issues with the website right now? What information do they want? They want quickly because it's really all about keeping the end users in mind for this site. And as we jumped in with Stride, we've had creative brainstorming sessions and we've outlined the process with them moving forward. So my last slide here. Oh, there we go. So kind of a timeline to look at. March and April, we've looked at the site as it is right now. We've procured the developer and we've contracted with them in May. Kind of broke our development into three phases here and trying to launch it, develop it over the summer here to launch in the fall. So our first phase is the architecture. And that's really figuring out what all the menus are, how they're linked together, how the whole site functions. So wrapping up that piece and now we're getting to phase two. Developers term is wireframing, basically sketch-ups of every page of the website, what they're going to look like. So once we go through those and approve that, they really get to the fun behind the scenes part where they'll code it, they'll build it, it's going to be a WordPress platform. And that will be the heavy lifting that takes place later this month and into August. And then I'll be pretty busy over the summer because my job's going to be to, once we have, you know, the framing of the house done, to put the rooms together and the furniture, which is the content. So I'll be migrating content, some rewrites, some, working with Brittany on that as well and other system leaders in our district to get that content ironed out, new photos in there and get ready to go. So ideally, we're looking at a new launch when school starts, ideally for then, may go into September, depending how this next couple of months go. And then the other key takeaway is our current website's going to go away at the end of this month. Our contract's up with them. Makes most sense with our process here to put an interim site in place. I've worked with our IT department and I've reached out to school leaders on what is the most important information we need to make sure we have up there over the summer for families. So I will be working to get that site up and running the next couple of weeks so we can have a transition on July 1st. And then that site will be there. It won't look great, but it'll have information there that we need to have out there. And then we'll work to transition a new site when it's ready to launch. And I've stepped in the help of this development process and compile and input the content as a means to keep our costs down to our contractor on this.
Commissioners, Commissioner Curry and then Commissioner Barlow?
Is, will there be a beta test of the new website where internal staff, teachers, students can try it before it goes public?
Yeah, that's a good idea. That's something our developers talked about. Once we have some prototype ready to get some user clicking around and some feedback at that point before we're ready for the final launch.
And is there anyone to do regulatory review of what's required to be on the website by law?
Yep. Yep. That's something we've built in with our contractor to make sure that's all included and we're following all those steps there.
Commissioner Barlow?
You had mentioned you're using WordPress as a content management system. Are you envisioning that some of the other schools and community, the PTO groups would have access and be able to update their own content or would that still come through the district main office?
Yeah, we would look to discuss that a little bit more, but I think we believe we'd still link externally to their pages. We'd make a presence on each school page to have access for someone to see PTO presence, then click on the link to open their web presence from that point.
The other point that I'd like to make is really important to make sure that it's mobile-friendly and responsive. And I know that WordPress, the newer versions of WordPress are. And so that's like a primary importance. It's impossible to look at the district website on a phone or, and it's challenging on a tablet sometimes. And the other thing is, it'd be nice if we could bring board docs along on this journey as well because that's also very, very difficult to use on a mobile device. And so I don't know if as part of this project, we can look for a newer interface for board docs or a replacement for board docs, or maybe that's beyond the scope of this effort, but.
Actually, interesting you say that. So Brittany's already been investigating board docs and there is a 2.0 version with other options and more-
It can certainly get a lot better.
Yeah, it could get a lot better than what we currently use it for. So we are looking at that and seeing how we could use that. Might make for better communication for the board in terms of even minutes and things like that as well, too.
But within board docs, it wouldn't really be, it still would be its own site. So you'd have to, it wouldn't really be integrated with the website. So if that was something that we'd wanted to pursue further, I could definitely look into other options outside of board docs.
Commissioner Curry?
So I remembered maybe a year ago, we were doing budget discussions. There's a gentleman in the community who is an IT expert who offered to volunteer to help the district and offered to pull a couple people together to support the district's IT needs. He's actually, he's married to a teacher and I can give his name, but I'm just wondering if maybe there's a way to kind of curtail the costs of IT by using like one or two volunteers to do some of the work you're talking about, you know, to be helpful. Because he was very willing to volunteer. So I'd be happy to pass on his info.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Great. Superintendent?
So Anders is not here yet. So let me draw your attention to, you just emailed him?
So Superintendent, we can go on and do the consent agenda?
Right.
That may take some time.
Can I just make one quick comment just on the, under the superintendent items? You may not have noticed it, but there's bracketed numbers next to the items and that was intentionally done. I'm trying to align the agenda items to the policies that we've set so we can start sort of focusing on aligning that. So you'll see these items come back in the final reports as evidence of meeting those particular policy areas. And that'll help us, hopefully help us stay focused on the work the board has set in terms of through the policy mandate.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks. It's very helpful. So we'll move on then to the consent agenda. We'll come back to Anders Odin as soon as he arrives. Before then, I see a hand. Commissioner Judson?
It's just a little ironic about doing the consent agenda because board docs is down.
Yes, indeed, indeed. Luckily, we have Brittany here with some documents for us and hopefully that'll help. Commissioner Curry?
I'd like to move-
Okay, I'm sorry. Actually, let me just start with something if you don't mind. If you'd hold on to that for one moment.
Sure.
What I'd like to do is I'd like to invite Commissioner Harrington to kind of clarify the rules around consent agendas so that we all are familiar with what the procedures are. I emailed you a doc that she shared, a document that she shared with me, but sometimes a verbal, a verbal is much better. So Commissioner Harrington?
It was actually my, there was a board orientation, the, when I guess Ann and Mark Barlow and I and I guess Lauren, whoever else joined the board at the same time our term started, where somebody came and did a little brief overview of parliamentary procedure, but didn't cover consent agendas. And we've been a little, I think, messy in our approach to them and it's, so it just seemed like it would be good to have a common understanding. Consent agenda is a tool for boards to manage business efficiently. And obviously as a board that is off in here until midnight, we have an interest in being expeditious with our business. And so consent agenda is basically a way to bundle together routine items that don't require any discussion, yet still require board approval. The classic example of this, if you consult parliamentary resources, is the approval of minutes. Sometimes even the acceptance of reports that have been long shared in previous forms or perhaps just sent back for some- or perhaps just sent back for some minor formatting change. I mean, you can put anything you want to in a consent agenda, except what it's built for is things that really don't require discussion. They should be routine and uncontroversial. The, as the consent agenda is put forth, we need to have enough time to review the materials in the consent agenda and it's incumbent upon us to pay attention to them. So the fact that it's routine and may not require discussion doesn't mean it doesn't require overview. And so part of our responsibility as commissioners, looking at the consent agenda, is to look and ask questions of whoever the person might be responsible. So if you had a question about, if anyone has a question about the minutes that you'll see for next month's consent agenda about the ad hoc committee meeting last night, you would write to me about it if you have a, you know, whatever, you know, write, talk to Stephanie about questions about the D and E. If your questions lead you to think, I really think we need to discuss this, then it's any one person, any one person's right to say, I want to pull that item from the consent agenda. That does not require a vote, it does not require anybody else's approval. So the first thing the chair should do is ask, does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda? If someone says, I want to improve, you know, I want to take item A off the consent agenda, then it's the chair's decision where to put it in the agenda and then it will just become its own item of business, subject to discussion. Otherwise, once the chair is sure that nothing else needs to be removed from the consent agenda, then you can ask, invite a motion to approve the consent agenda, we move the consent agenda. There's no discussion of the motion to approve the consent agenda because the point is to be quick. So the key thing about constricting a consent agenda is to, you know, is to use it responsibly in putting the items on it and for us all to be prepared as, which is in fact keeping in one of our other policies about being prepared and present for all meetings, so.
So there's two questions.
So we often consider the consent agenda late in our meeting. And so asking if a commissioner wants to pull something from the consent agenda and consider it individually late in the meeting, I mean, would it be more efficient or is it ever common to do that at the beginning of the meeting instead of?
Yeah, it is common for the consent agenda to be probably earlier in a meeting. So yeah, we don't, we could move it earlier in the meeting and that's not a bad idea, so.
But I think you're supposed to ask for it to be removed at the beginning of the meeting.
No, when we get to it on the, yeah, when we get to it.
And I guess the second question I have is, I know since I've been on the board, changes in employment status in the district are often on the consent agenda. And I know prior to me being on the board, there had been times when, I know at least one time when those, that was, that was pulled, I guess a person was pulled off the consent agenda. But is that something that is typical, maybe this is something that is a discussion for the admin, ask, request for the administration to respond, but is that something that's typically on the consent agenda and why, why is that out?
Well, the only, the only items in terms of staff we put place on the consent agenda are, it is by state legislation or licensed teachers and administrators. Other than that, the other items are within the operational structure. So that's why you get the list of, you know, all the teachers and you get the admin when we have the new hires that come to the board.
Commissioner Orwell, let me just see if Commissioner Barlow was there.
Yeah, so you're saying since we sign the, we are responsible for the contract, to bargain the contract and to sign the contract, then those changes in status are shown to us, that's a statutory requirement?
It's a statutory requirement.
Okay, thank you.
But this is still my question that I have, is if that is statutory, why, then, then it's not something that we, then we are putting our name to the, to all those licensed peoples' contract essentially. And by, by, and my only big thing here is that that is something very different than what policy governance where you are doing that and we are just questioning you on how you're doing it. Because here, the consent, the policy governance and the, us having to sign this don't mesh. It's, they're contradictory to each other. Do you get what I, it used to be that, that we, literally the head of the board or the person that was the scribe.
Chair. The chair?
Clerk would sign every single contract when I was on the board in the 90s. So, and I understand that, but now we're changing it. Why? We are changing that.
Conversation organized. So I want to just, if I can, repeat Superintendent Obeng's comment, which is, we're not changing that in the sense that the chair of the board signs all contracts. But I'm going to ask Commissioner Curry to shed some light on this issue around consent agenda items related to staff.
So the practice you're talking about has been the case and still is the case, that the consent agenda contains those licensed administrators' contracts and the chair does continue to sign those. They've always been on the consent agenda and there has always been a process where in the event that one of those administrators being proposed is problematic for reasons that the board is aware of, then that administrator has been pulled off the consent agenda and had, you know, a greater degree of discussion and, you know, in one case came to an actual vote after multiple executive sessions because a number of board members had knowledge of other circumstances from their tenure on the board. And the policy governance documents allow us to do that because they indicate under executive limitations, the superintendent shall not basically create certain situations in the district that would go beyond what the board has authorized as parameters. And so the same thing would happen again if the superintendent proposed an administrator and certain, and board members felt that that proposed administrator was problematic because it violated executive limitations that the board had established. And so the board always has a set of parameters. It says, so the superintendent, these are the parameters under which we are delegating authority to you. But if a situation arises where, you know, you're not remaining within those parameters, then we are going to act upon that. And so we continue to have the authority and the ability to pull a contract off the consent agenda and discuss it separately for whatever reasons that may conform to the policy that has the executive limitations or any other policy, you know.
Commissioner Harrington.
And just to get back to where this started, routine hiring approvals, approval of contracts where other parameters have previously been established and it's, it is a routine matter of contract, approval of minutes, those are all very common examples of things that go in consent agendas. So it's, that is.
Commissioner Wick.
So with respect to what are routine matters, sufficient that they ought to just be on the consent agenda? I just don't know where I fall yet on the idea of the financial reports that we used to be given in the committee. And then I understood that we were now going to be given those reports live in front of the full board. And then now they've been put into the consent agenda so that yes, we can, we may privately, in the comfort of our offices, review the reports, but that there's no public giving of the report. So I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just, I think this is the, is this the first time we've seen financial reports put into a consent agenda instead of a regular line item?
Yes.
I think it's worth discussing.
It's not the first time. Good at the last meeting. Let me just speak to that. I mean, I appreciate your comment and I think it's, it's, it's the prerogative of any board member to pull something from the consent agenda. My, so for example, I looked at, for example, the variance report today. And the variance report shows no danger signals. Things look great financially. That suggests that that might be something that we put on the consent agenda and not pull because it doesn't seem to require discussion. So I think that, I think that that's the discipline for us, is to read carefully these documents and not be shy about saying that we think something needs further discussion. Because many times, if those of you who attended finance committee meetings know that these items, that Nathan Lavery presented these items and there was no discussion and we just moved on. So we, and I want to just say that we want to spend our time debating and discussing those things that we really need the time on and to the extent that we can expedite without however being, being too hasty, then we should do that. But every person has the ability to pull something from the consent agenda. And so when, when there is a financial report that causes you concern, by all means, and it may very well be that the superintendent himself, if a financial report is concerning, would himself not propose it being on the consent agenda. I want to just see if anybody else has any other comments before we go there. Commissioner Curry.
And I just want to add that the finance reports, financial reports used to only come to the finance committee. So sometimes only four board members would see them and the rest of the board wouldn't even see them unless they went to the finance committee. So in a way, this is actually more available to the public because it's a regular board. It's easy to find, it's more consistent and there's an opportunity for the public to ask questions about them and, you know, contact you instead of like figuring out who the finance committee meetings are, who the board members are, who, when the meetings are. So the effort is to bring the information together more comprehensively for all the board to see.
So who decides?
Commissioner Wick, did you want to speak? Yep, go ahead. It's all right.
Who decides which items go on the consent agenda? Is that the chair?
The, this is in conjunction with the sort of executive team of the board and the superintendent?
Meaning the chair, the vice chair and the clerk?
Uh huh, yep.
Yeah, I had, I had the same question because I've never been to what used to be the planning committee and these things appear on the consent agenda and I assume that the chair and the superintendent collaborate on it. But I guess, just to follow up on Commissioner Wick's point about if there, about financial reports being on the consent agenda, I would, I would hope that the executive committee, if they saw something that was not ordinary in a financial report, would, would pull it off the consent agenda and have it be part of the main meeting. And I expect that that would be the case anyway. So I'm, I mean, with the current executive committee, I'm, I'm confident that that would happen, you know? But I think that that's, that's something that we need to be mindful of as a board.
Thank you. You know, these are in the minutes and I think we should continue to discuss this. I mean, I think these are important questions as we continue to transition to a new model and let's continue to have this discussion. Let's see how this works. If we're not comfortable with it, then let's propose some changes as we go along because these are certain really valid considerations and, and we want to be making sure that we are paying attention to finances in much detail as we can. Great. Did, I'm sorry, did I see any other hands here?
Thank you for that summary around terms of, the board has a prerogative to make changes as they, as they move forward in terms of if they see things are not working well for them. One of the things that we've done in terms of staff, we've looked at other districts and what, how they operate in terms of, through policy governance or not. Everyone is considered with consent agenda. You'll see a number of different things. Some of the items that we actually present in some districts are on the consent agenda, right? So if you're really that, if you're really curious, go online and review some of the other districts' board meetings and you'll see the range of types of things that are actually under consent agenda. Some of them, I was kind of quite surprised that, I don't think this board would probably want on the consent agenda, but it ranges. So we got to get to a comfort level and I think this is working for us right now and at some point, if you question it, then we can look at revising it.
And I would encourage you, as you go along to, if you have concerns, by all means, share it with particularly Commissioner Porter. Okay, so I'm going to ask the big question. Are there any items to remove from the consent agenda? Commissioner Curry.
I'd just like to remove the minutes of May 9th, the board minutes of May 9th and the D and E minutes of May 10th, which both still need to be reviewed.
So we're removing items B and D from the consent agenda? They will go back to their committees for revision and they will appear on the next?
No, actually, you need to move them to their own item and then we need to discuss them and somebody needs to make a motion to table them or something. They become a business item if you pull it from the consent agenda.
Okay. I'll hold on to, I've just got some advice. I'm going to hold off on what we do to it, but I want to see if there's anything else, any other items to pull from the consent agenda? Commissioner Wick.
Item G, please, the health insurance item.
Okay. So I'm going to rely on Commissioner Harrington on the process here. And so why don't you just state it for everybody?
So then the items that are on the consent agenda are items A.
C.
C, E, F, H, I, J and K. So in other words, everything but the two committee minutes and the health insurance item. So we need a motion to accept the consent agenda with those items.
Okay. So we have a motion from Commissioner Curry to accept the remaining items on the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Kleeman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, passes unanimously. The next step is?
You decide where to put those items, so.
Okay.
You can do them now.
Okay. So with regard to items B and D, those are going to go back to the committees for revision and they'll appear on the next, on the next board agenda. And in terms of item G, I.
I need to invite a motion to table them.
I need to invite a motion to table B and D.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I need a second?
Yes.
I need a second. Commissioner Barlow, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Those items are tabled.
You said B and D, tabling items B and D.
That's correct.
So the draft May 9th board minutes and the.
Diversity and Equity.
Diversity and Equity will be ta, tabled.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, just want to make sure I got that right. And sorry, the motion was, I know.
Mr. Harrington and Commissioner Barlow? Great. And so the remaining item G, I'd like to take up now. And so this is a motion and could we see that, Brittany?
So what we, yes, we need a motion. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve the change to the health insurance plan as presented in item G.
Do I have a second? Just to say that you can second without agreeing with it. It allows us to then discuss it.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Judson is a second.
I was actually pointing at Kathy.
Okay, so Commissioner Carrington and Commissioner Judson. And this is the motion to formally approve a change of the plan year by adopting the following motion. Do you want to read the motion or can I ask Superintendent Obeng to speak to why this is necessary?
I think we can just, I mean, we can see it. Is it possible to make it bigger?
I'd like to.
I don't think it can get any bigger.
I'll have Senior Director Lavery just try to simplify the explanation of this a little bit since it has been pulled, so.
So first of all, I think it's a bit of a misnomer and this is really about changing the plan year for what's called our Section 125 Plan or Flexible Spending Account, FSA. Folks might have heard of that. So here's what's going on. In January, we've talked a lot about it, the health insurance plans will change. And that's a separate item. But currently, our plan year for health insurance runs July 1 through June 30. Additionally, the FSA, which is a tax-preferred vehicle that allows employees to put pre-tax dollars into a savings account effectively and then use that money toward qualified health expenses, tax-free, that is also running on a July 1 through June 30 fiscal year. When we move to the new plans, all of which feature a different ratio of premiums to out-of-pocket costs, covering some of those out-of-pocket costs, there are going to be other ways to do that, but this way, the Section 125 Plan is still an option. And in fact, I suspect that when we move to the new plans, it'll be an option that more employees take advantage of. So the reason we want to change the plan year is because if we don't change the plan year, we'll be in a situation where employees elect their health insurance coverage for the year in January, yet they have to make decisions about contributions to this savings vehicle on a plan year that runs, it's off by six months. So you'd have to choose and you'd know, okay, I'm going to pick a plan and this is kind of my likely premiums and these are my likely out-of-pocket costs in January. But then you'd have to wait six months before you could change what you've elected to contribute as far as your plan year for the FSA. So the idea here is to synchronize that. It does create a little more work for the district and, and kind of puts us in a slightly, it's not like a worse position, but it's a, and it's an adjustment we'll have to deal with. But in, in speaking with other folks, and I think Nikki could, would agree here in talking with other HR folks, but talking to other districts, the reality is. to other districts, the reality is, it's a bit of a lift for the district to do, but it's going to be significantly better for employees, and it's going to be much more intuitive to be saying, this is my plan, and this is how much I'm going to set aside in this account to support what I anticipate my expenditures being.
For that period.
For that period. It's a one-year, it's a one-year period. So we have to go through this process here of essentially running a short plan year, which is this July through December. And then when folks are picking their new plans starting January 1, they will also be able to elect a different level of contributions to an FSA if they choose to do it at that time.
Any questions or comments from board members, any clarification needed? Commissioner Wick?
Can you think of any, I mean, this sounds perfectly sensible. Can you think of any that I wouldn't know of, unintended adverse consequences to any of the stakeholders related to this plan?
There's one key thing, and we've included this in the information that we sent out to people. So FSA is, you put the money in, you have to spend the money within the plan year, when, and with the exception of $500 in our case that you can roll over. So the one thing that we've been careful to point out in the documentation here is, when we go through this kind of short plan year, the six-month version, that we have to use to get onto a cycle beginning in January, we've been telling employees, make sure that you only elect to contribute that which you plan to spend or anticipate spending in the next six months, right? So the one, one issue is you wouldn't want to, if you thought you were going to spend $1,000, but it wasn't going to be until January, and then you were going to go have some procedure, you wouldn't want to put the $1,000 into your plan between July 1 and December 31 short plan year because you would lose $500 of that. So that's the one risk which we've tried to communicate to people. There's no doubt that's an adjustment. Generally speaking, we don't have people losing, like, significant amounts of money in this, so I'm not, I don't think it's a major likelihood. There's not a lot of participants in the plan right now, but that is, that is one risk. As far as the, you know, for, kind of administratively, I, it is not a risk, but the kind of downfall to us is we just have to kind of administer one of these enrollment periods twice in a, you know, six-month period, instead of kind of once a year.
But the over contribution can happen even if it was the other?
Yes, but I'm just saying, you know, right now, if you're, if you are participating, and you're used to doing it for a year, you just have to make sure you kind of do a six-month, you do half a year's worth of whatever you would anticipate, and then you get back on your one-year cycle.
Mr. Owell?
Would it be possible to make it easier for all of them to do it for a year and a half instead of?
No, we can't do that. Yeah, there's, unfortunately, there's pretty strict rules. We work with, this plan's kind of administered by Future Planning Associates, and there's pretty strict rules about this. The Section 125 is, that this is called, is, refers to the federal law that governs it. So this is how, yeah, and this was actually drafted by those folks who administer it. This is how you have to move your plan year. You have to do a short plan year, and you can only do it once. You can't do it six months, and six months, and six months. You can't do that.
Okay, no more discussion. Like to take a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion? I'll forego reading it since we've all seen it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All the abstentions? Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner, Director Lavery. So I want to just summarize where we are. We have, we have some items that require the presence of Joe McNeil, and he is tied up for a little bit longer. So in particular, item 4I on overview of board functions, and some discussion around management of staff versus this, and the superintendent. We are waiting for Mr. McNeil to arrive for that. The next item is executive session, and we have two.
Still have my good news item.
I'm so sorry. Is Anders here?
Anders is here.
Yes, there we go.
Yeah, if I can call Anders up, please, and I have Principal Rosak at here as well, too.
I think I did, you did see the communication, the press release that we sent out, but I'll read just a, a little bit of the first stanza to honor this big man. Yes, just get you in camera view. Where do you want him? Where do you want him? Center? Oh, you're going to be center stage, all right. I can be the voice behind it.
Can you block the light without melting something?
Probably, I think there's a book in there.
No, it gets very hot.
Okay.
Yeah, hopefully.
So quickly, welcome, Mr. Odie. Brooklyn High School senior Anders Odie has been named 2017 U.S. Presidential Scholar, one of the nation's highest honors for high school students. The White House Commission on Presidential Scholars selects students annually based on their academic success, artistic excellence, essays, school evaluations, and transcripts, as well as evidence of community service, leadership, and demonstrated commitment to high ideals. Odie is just one of 161 high school seniors to receive this national distinction. I believe he's one of seven that's happened in our state, so.
One of two in the state.
One of two in the state, one of two in the state. So that's quite an honor. So, and you are a senior. We wanted to kind of maybe have you repeat the year, improve our data. I know you're preparing for greater and more productive things. We have a small token to present to you, Anders, on behalf of the district and school board.
Oh, thanks.
Small plaque here, the certificate of achievement. And this is probably the highest honor you can get, considering graduation is, is next, is next week. That's another honor as well, too. And I hope they'll take time to mention this great distinction for you as well, too. So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
So I'd just like to say that this award is really just as much a testament to my work as it is to all of the opportunities that have been provided to me in the school district. Everyone who works in the schools, all of my teachers, really without them, it wouldn't be possible. And I was really only able to accomplish this, and many other things, because of the opportunities for rigorous challenge that were available to me in the school district. And I'd just like to encourage, encourage everyone to continue to support those opportunities for challenge for kids, because that's really an avenue for kids to better themselves, and, and really do more than they otherwise could, and demonstrate what they can do early on when it counts. And thank you very much.
All right. That is yours. I want to take the opportunity to congratulate that. And all of you who've had family members who have been parents, and you know, young people, they do give you such challenges, and to have this honor, to have someone who's achieved at such a high level, so it's a great credit to the work that you and your family have done to support such a community. So congratulations to you.
Did you want to say something?
Well, just briefly, Anders is the fourth of four, and we've been very pleased with the Burlington School System. As Anders said, the support that he's received, not just from the teachers, but from the administration, special educators, the custodians, it's a terrific district, and we've really enjoyed our association over many years with this district. Thank you very much.
Well, that was a great moment, in the many challenging days we have. So thank you for being here. And we hope to hear back from you, Anders, about your experience. So hopefully, perhaps you can come to the school board sometime next year when you're home, and kind of share what's, what the transition has been like, and what your experience has been like. Does that sound okay?
It sounds like we planned it.
Good, all right, all right, we're counting on it. Great. So the next item on the agenda is executive session, and we have two items. I'm going to ask my parliamentarian next to me for advice on approaching this. So do we have just a motion for each?
Yes.
And do we do them both now?
Yes, yes.
So we, I invite a motion to consider executive session to discuss contract negotiations where premature disclosure to the public could put the district at disadvantage?
So moved.
Commissioner Harrington, second?
Second.
Commissioner Owell, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Do we do this one later?
No, I think we can make both.
Okay, so we're going to, we have a second, a second item, and so we'll do that motion now as well, and that is a motion to consider personnel matter.
In executive session.
In executive session. Do I have a, Commissioner Harrington has so moved, Commissioner Judson has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. So I just want to remind you that we will come back from executive session to take up the remaining item 4I on the agenda. So we will retire now for, to executive session. Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for being here.